I'll call the meeting to order. Everyone would stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have one board member not in attendance this evening. Matt Stock will not be here. Next on the agenda, we have an announcement, one announcement to make. We were provided with a certificate for a board member from New York State School Boards Association for attaining the level of Board Excellence Award, earned by Dennis Piori for his participation in numerous leadership development opportunities offered by NISPOS. With that, I need a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
Some who?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up is the approval of minutes from our Board of Ed session, including an executive session on April 16th, as well as our special meeting for the Erie County School Boards election on April 17th.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Carrie. All right, with that, Superintendent's report, Dr. Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Fuchs. We're going to start with the Clarence Schools and Richmond Foundation, and we have some officers from that particular entity that are going to award more teacher grants.
My name is Jenna Deepasquale, and I'm the grant coordinator for the Clarence Schools and Richmond Foundation. On behalf of CSF, I'd like to present the Board of Education, the winners of our Spring 2018 Biannual Grant Program. This fall, we received nine grant applications requesting a total of $8,910.48. I'm proud to announce that the CSF Board has approved the funding of all nine grants. The Grant Selection Committee looked for grants that would enhance the educational experience of students in the Clarence Central School District by offering ancillary enrichment in the arts, sciences, math, technology, applied careered skills, and athletics. They took into consideration the number of students impacted, need of the project, and alignment of the goals of the school district and individual buildings within the district. I'd like to take the time to recognize the three members of the selection committee who all reside in Clarence. Dr. Adrianne Castello-Culic is an Associate Professor of English Education at Buff State College and is also a Clarence alum. Her son, Michael, is a second grader at Sheridan Hill, and she's also a CSF Board member and currently serves as our secretary. The other two members who couldn't be here tonight, Carrie Prokopio has been a Clarence resident since 2011. Her son, Joey, is in eighth grade at Aspire Learning Center, and her daughter, Tessa, is a seventh grader at Clarence Middle School, and her son, Charles, is a kindergartner at Clarence Center. She's a fifth grade math and science teacher at Transit Middle School and has been teaching in the Williamsville District for 19 years. And our third member, Adrianne Duquette, is an active member of the PTO at Clarence Middle School and treasurer of the Clarence Center Elementary PTO. Her daughter, Sophia, is a seventh grader at Clarence Middle School, and her son, Henry, is a fourth grader at Clarence Elementary School. The CSF Board looks to always pick new members to be on our selection committee for our grants because it keeps it a little more diversified. I'd like to ask Board Member Dawn Schneider, who's the CSF liaison, and Dr. Hicks, Superintendent of Schools, to come forward and help us present. Oh, there we are, our certificates. Okay, our first grant recipient, Peggy Strauss, auditory isolated learning centers at Harris Michelle Layer, science materials for new science standards, Clarence Center. I'm not sure. Leslie Heim, Lynn Elable and Jeannie Rook, poetry workshop at the middle school. I don't think they're here tonight. Virginia Haberfield and Amy Arnold, kindergarten Makerspace Project, Sheridan Hill. Ashley Klinger Smith, Andrea Pousatary, Christine Berry, and Kristin Sokolowski, sensory room Kimberly Anderson and Carrie Webster, focus on reading, Sheridan Hill. Lauren Riddling, flexible seating in a first grade classroom, Harris Hill. Beth Braun Salato, unified basket uniforms, middle school and high school unified sports, and they headed their victory tonight in the gym not long ago. Mary Schnitter, LEGO education, we do 2.0 core set for Harris Hill. Since the beginning of our grant program in the fall of 2014, CSF has awarded 98 grants totaling $100,899.55. These programs have made possible by generous donations from a member of our community and throughout the support of our three major fundraising events during the year. On behalf of the foundation, I'd like to publicly applaud the individuals that won tonight for developing enrichment activities for the students at Clarence. CSF is thrilled to support these opportunities and celebrate the efforts of these district employees and their dedication and commitment to their students. CSF would also like to take the opportunity to announce and support, our support of the Sheridan Hill Playground Project. CSF recognizes the importance of outdoor free play and realizes that it's a vital part of our children's educational experience. Therefore, it's with great pleasure that the Clarence Schools and Richmond Foundation announces our Sheridan Hill Playground Gift Matching Program. For every donation made to the Sheridan Hill PTO Playground Fund Drive through the remainder of the school year, CSF will match it dollar for dollar up to $5,000. I'd like to have Jenny Collins, who's the PTO President, come up and grab a certificate Our fifth annual Peach Cup Golf Tournament, to benefit CSF, co-chaired by Sam Haliba and John Casey, will be held on Monday, June 18th at the Links at Ivy Ridge. This year, we have partnered with the Ronald McDonald House Charities of Western New York, Child and Family Services Haven House, and the Lockport Volleyball Club to make this event a coordinated event for Western New York charities. We look forward to your support. Sponsorship and ticket information is on our website at www.clarencechoolfund.org. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the Superintendent's Report, we have a really special treat. Stephanie Parwolski is a 2011 graduate of Clarence High School, and she has recently published her first children's book, which is super spiffy. Can you hold that one up, Mike? And it's, can you?
Beatrice and the Sunflower Gift.
Awesome. So, congratulations, Steph, and we'd like you to say a couple of words to the board, please.
Yes, we can clap. We can clap for Steph.
Hello, everyone. My name is Stephanie Parwolski. I'm a Clarence resident and 2011 graduate of Clarence High School. I attended Ledgeview Elementary and Clarence Middle School as well. I was fortunate to earn my BA in English from Damon College in 2016. I'm a children's book author, and my first book, Beatrice and the Sunflower Gift, was recently released. As a thank you for the wonderful education I received throughout the Clarence School District and a way to give back, I am pleased to announce that I will be making a donation of one copy of my book to each of the kindergarten, first grade, and second grade classes and libraries in the four elementary schools in Clarence, which equates to approximately 46 books in total. This donation will be made in memory of my mom, Celia A. Parwolski. I am honored to be able to make this announcement this evening.
Congratulations, Stephanie, and thank you very much. Our kids can't wait to dig into that book. Next on the Superintendent's Report, we have Kristin Overholt, our Director of Curriculum, who's going to describe our newly adopted math program for grades K through 5.
Thank you, Dr. Hicks. This evening, I will provide an overview of the evaluation process that was utilized, as well as highlight the features of the Envisions 2.0 math program as we plan for full implementation in the 2018-19 school year. The pilot period began approximately five years ago after the release of the Common Core Mathematics Modules in 2013-14. In 2014-15, the modules were piloted specifically in the area of fractions across the district, and that year, Harris Hill also conducted a full module pilot. In 2015-16, both Eureka and Envisions 2.0 were released, and teachers were asked to pilot one of those programs and to provide feedback. Trainings were provided in both programs in the summer of 2015. After a full year pilot of the new programs, teachers were then surveyed in the fall of 2016. It was determined at that point that the majority of the faculty was utilizing Envisions 2.0, 51 percent to be exact, and 32 percent of teachers were utilizing the Envisions program. What was interesting at that point was that 72 percent of the faculty were supplementing with some other program in addition to utilizing the two programs previously described. In the 2016-17 school year, we encouraged teachers that were currently piloting to try one of those two programs. So, at the end of the 2017 school year, most teachers had experienced at that point with one of those two programs. By winter of 2017, department chairs were polled, and we received feedback from approximately 25 grade-level teams. So, at that point, 44 percent of the teams, grade-level teams, were utilizing Envisions 2.0, and 28 percent were utilizing Eureka. And 18 percent of teams were utilizing a mix of both programs. At our December 2017 Department Chair meeting, we asked grade-level chairs to complete a survey of the primary program they were utilizing. The survey was developed from a research-based tool called the Instructional Materials Evaluation Tool from Achieve the Core. The survey focused on four areas: alignment, standards progression, assessment, and standards for mathematical practice. Envisions 2.0 received an overall score of 22 out of 24. Envisions 2.0 aligned not only with the next generation's standards, but also aligned to the New York State Cluster Emphasis Documents, which allows for more focused instruction around the power of standards. Envisions 2.0 received a 4 out of 4 in this area. Teachers also found that the program moved from a conceptual understanding of standards to procedural fluency and ultimately application of those standards. Envisions 2.0 received a 9.1 out of 10 in that area. Teachers found that the assessments were rigorous and mirrored the expectations of the next generation's standards. Envisions 2.0 scored a 5.4 out of 6 in this area. Teachers also felt that Envisions allowed for students to engage in the mathematical practices and scored a 3.5 out of 4 in this round. Additionally, we found that the program offers multiple entry points for students to gain understanding of mathematical concepts. All of these features are online, therefore available to students both at school as well as at home. Some additional features we just wanted to share this evening was that students can access lesson videos through the Bounce Page app. This provides students another look at the lesson and provides parents with the opportunity to assist their children at home. Visual learning is also available for every lesson. This feature can be accessed in class by either the teacher or the student and support the learning throughout the lesson. This feature, again, is also available at home. Students have access to interactive mathematical tools that can be placed on individual iPads or saved on the teacher's classroom page. For grades 3 through 5, the Practice Buddy feature provides assistance to students by allowing students to revisit the lesson, view examples, and provide animations. The Solve and Share feature allows teachers and students to use virtual manipulatives and tools to problem solve and demonstrate their understanding. Our implementation timeline began shortly after the final decision was made in early March. Department chairs made recommendations for professional development, and the curriculum team and building leaders have been working to devise a plan to meet all teachers' needs. Training for teachers in grades K through 2 was provided on our April Staff Development Day with training from Pearson. For teachers who are already utilizing the Envisions 2.0 program, they received staff development training in the area of mathematics for their respective grade levels. Teams also had then a portion of the day to meet as a district-wide team to plan for next year, and we also have similar training that we are planning for early June for teachers in grades 3 through 5. This concludes the presentation, and I would be happy to take your questions at this time.
Board, have any questions?
Has the, you know, the things you say you can use on your cellphone or the app?
Yes.
Has that been communicated to parents that, or is that new and it's going to be communicated to?
That, yeah, that will be communicated with, to parents when we roll out the program, but yes, that's on our list of things to do.
Any other questions by the board?
Just a couple. Sorry.
Sure.
With regards to the piloting, just to clarify, I know a group of teachers took the Envisions 2.0 and another group took Eureka. Was that, you know, one building did one or the other, or was it interspersed within the buildings?
It was a mix across buildings. We did find in some buildings, there was a majority of teachers that, after that pilot period, started to navigate towards one program, but we did have a mix in all buildings that programs were trialed across all four.
And then with regards to Envision 2.0, obviously, that's what we piloted and decided on.
Yes.
And firsthand, my daughter had experienced, so I'm happy with the choice. But with that said, obviously, programs come in and are out of date, they refresh. I'm sure it's not the most recent version of Envisions currently, but I've heard some not-so-great things about the current one. Can you talk about, you know, what the intention is as far as this iteration and whether we're going to stick with it for a while or at what time period we'd reassess and potentially upgrade to the most current version?
Yeah. So, we are, we remain in constant communication, particularly with Pearson, who publishes Envisions 2.0. So, in terms of the next generation's standards that were just released, Pearson is in the process of updating the materials to reflect all of the changes in those standards. So, as soon as those become available, we will then integrate them as part of the program. So, though it may not be a full overhaul of the 2.0 program, as updates are made, we will integrate them into the program.
Refresh and augment as we go.
Correct.
Thank you.
Kristin, what do they use at the middle school? You know, obviously, this is grade K through 5, but as they go into the middle school, does the middle school have a program? Does Envision have an extension to this?
Yes, and it's consistent. Yeah, so it's a Mifflin program, and it's consistent in grades 6 through 8.
Any other questions? As the board knows, math is the strongest area in the district, and we have the highest performing math kids in all of Western New York. So, we wanted to really take our time and not, if it wasn't broken, we didn't want to fix it. And this was a four-and-a-half-year process led by the curriculum team. We have consensus around this being the best program for now, and we promised the teachers we would get them all the supplemental aids and services that are necessary to put this program into place. So, we'll kick it off with more training this summer and then start with the kids in the fall. Thanks, Kristin. Great job. Finally, the final, standing ovation, Kristin. Final item for the Superintendent's Report is the mandatory public hearing on the budget, and our business administrator, Rick Mancuso, is going to go through that.
Okay, thank you. As Dr. Hicks mentioned, at a prescribed time, we have to have a formal public hearing, even though the budget has already been worked through a little bit. So, we will go over briefly those six topics that you see. The next 90 minutes will fly by. So, the first item is the actual process of the budget. Administration literally monitors the budget daily. Board of Education oversees all the monitoring, and they do set goals and priorities. Besides regular board meetings, there were three formal board sessions just dedicated to budget prior to the April adoption of the proposed budget. Basic goals and directives. There were two of them. One is to protect and enhance all of our core programs, as we had talked about in the past. Whatever makes Clarence Schools great, keep it that way. And be fiscally sound. We want to make sure that we have a budget that not only stays within the tax cap, but is sustainable in the long term. Here's a snapshot of the expense budget. Instruction is really instruction for all of the kids in the district and includes transportation for over 5,000 students. The increases in this year's budget are basically contractual increases. Programs stay the same, and some school safety items are added. We'll touch base on it in a minute. Capital part of the budget is all the buildings and grounds and all the debt service for all the projects that we do. Increases here are for the approved project that was voted on in 2014. Administration costs are minimal, just some minor increases contractually and for insurance Expenditure budget, here's your year-to-year change from the 2017-18 budget to the proposed 18-19. It's a 3.6 percent increase, and what's included here, besides just moving all of our programs forward, is an additional approximately $370,000 for school safety enhancements. The flip side of the expenditure budget is the revenue budget. So, here's your revenue comparison year to year. The New York State aid, other than building aid, was very minimal to the district this year. Sales tax and fund balance help keep the tax rate at a very modest level. Taxes. So, the proposed tax levy increase of 3.9 percent is well below the tax cap of 4.7. Assessment increases are going to distort the tax rate a little bit when you compare it. Our tax rate will drop significantly this year because of some of the assessment changes. The 3.9 percent increase, according to New York State, includes 1.4 percent growth in the district, completely new builds. So, for a normal home, if you look at levy to levy, your tax increase would be about 2.5 percent. For a $200,000 home, that's about $72 a year. Again, that's going to be a little distorted depending on if your assessment stayed the same or if it went up according to the same increase that the whole district had or if it went up more than that. We also have a bus proposition this year, $935,000 to purchase 10 buses. We've got nearly 100 buses in our fleet. Most buses last between nine and 13 years, and we do actually have some that are even over 170,000 miles. New York State reimburses us, it's a little over 70 percent right now for all the bus purchases. And because of the nature of a bus purchase, it just requires a simple majority vote. I think our plan makes sense. Approximately 1/10 of the fleet gets replaced every year. And what that does is it keeps all the repair costs very manageable, it keeps the fleet safe, obviously, and it keeps the tax cap flat. There are no sudden ups and downs to it. We do have a board of election race this year. Mr. Fuchs and Mr. Piori incumbents' seats are up this year. We have four candidates, Rachel Silva, Michael Fuchs, Dennis Piori, and Josh Bowers. Just real quick, this is the budget, so we're talking about finances, so how are we doing finance-wise? Well, we've been consistently, and we still are, the top five for cost effectiveness. We are and have been consistently top five for administrative efficiency, and the same goes for lowest spending per pupil. So, the vote is Tuesday, May 15th, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. The only other thing I want to mention is tomorrow night, here at the lecture hall at 7 o'clock, the joint PTOs of the district are sponsoring Meet the Candidates Night.
Any questions for Rick?
Couple items. One, just to clarify, the candidates, and I don't know, you just said it was here. There was some communication, it was in the auditorium, so just to be clear.
Yes, it is going to be here. Yes, I think they did tell me that the first notice they sent out said the high school lot, but it'll be in the lecture hall.
Okay. And then relative to the details that you just shared, every resident should be receiving or should have received the mailer right around this time, is that correct?
Yes, I received mine on Friday, I think. So, yes, you should, everybody should have it. If they don't have it by now, they'll have it early this week. And a budget postcard does get mailed out, and it's also required. It's called a six-day budget notice because it has to go out six days prior to the budget, and it will have a nice little summary, as much as you could put on a postcard, of what we just went over.
And there'll be plenty of parking available for the budget vote that day?
Yes, we pull out the first 100 spots closest to it, and we do actually have a shuttle bus from the library over to the high school needed.
And you have a number of voting booths as well?
Yes, yeah, we'll have nine traditional booths set up, scanners now, and one handicap line.
That concludes the Superintendent's Report. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. I know it says none, but it should be noted that we did receive one letter to the board regarding one student matter, and then we received a couple of letters concerning recess. I know some parents spoke at a meeting a few months back concerning the recess policies in the district. Would you mind, Dr. Hicks, updating us on where that sits?
Sure. I had another meeting with one of the more interested parents in recess this past week. We talked through some things about how it's been going from the time we met in February until now. There's really three big areas that we're working on. One is just a definition for recess so that everyone can have a full understanding of it. Secondly, we need to improve consistency within the building and between the elementary buildings on just who gets recess, who goes outside on a regular basis. And then finally, we talked through, what should the expectations be? And we agreed that we'll continue to meet, continue to have conversation and discussion. I would encourage any of the parents in the district to write a letter to the board or to write a letter to me if you have an opinion on recess, and we're going to continue to work on it and bring some ideas to the board at a later date. work on it and bring some ideas to the board at a later date.
Thank you for the update. Anybody else have anything to add?
I just have a quick question. Dr. Hicks, is there a timeframe when you'll present something or come back to the board?
Yeah, I'm hoping before the end of August.
So in other words, to have in place for the coming school year?
Yes. We want definitively these three things in place for the school year: a definition that everyone can live with, the expectation for consistency, and some ideas, at least some big ideas, for what the expectations are for grades K through 5. Just one note, Mr. Fuchs. New York State did come out with a new way to count time in school districts. Instead of counting days, we count hours now. And that throws a little monkey wrench in, but we still should be able to do recess on a daily basis for 20 minutes. Okay?
Thank you. That brings us to our first public comment session for this evening. If anybody has anything to add, there's two microphones. There'll be a second one later. All right. Any unfinished business from the board? All right, well, with that, Mr. Mancuso, finances?
Sure, there's not too much in the March financial reports. I did want to mention the Drive the School Bus Day didn't work out. We didn't have anyone sign up. But we are going to try to look at another district or two and try to do a joint day. The shortage of bus drivers is not just limited to Clarence, it's pretty much everywhere. The next item that I had was a couple of companies pop up, and this is one of them that several districts, local districts, use to go over utility bills and try to exact refunds. Now, our actual gas and electric purchase goes through a co-op, which there probably is not going to be anything there, but the delivery methods for the gas and electric goes through NICEIG and National Fuel Gas. So that's where there may be tariffs and things like that that are into those bills that the company may be able to recover some monies on. Same thing with the phone bills from the district. So we'd like to request your approval to contract with Troy and Banks to do that. And again, they, I attached what their fee schedule is, and it is a percentage of what they recover, so there's really no hard-dollar cost to the district. Only if they recover $100 do they get their $24 fee.
And that fee is just for the first year, and then we get the savings ongoing after that?
Yes.
100% of the savings?
Yes, going forward, after the first year, there's no fee for them, and they would have identified items that won't be on the bill going forward.
Any questions on the financials? Just ask one brief question. Relative to the Drive the School Bus Day, which was a very creative opportunity to try to spur some interest, we talked about doing it with neighboring districts. I know we all are faced with the same challenges. Are you aware if other districts have tried it before, or?
We only know of a couple of a private carrier who's done it. No other school district has tried it. It's nice because nicer, our insurance co-op, we would go with other nicer districts so that we know coverage is there, and they actually, we're going to have somebody come out and make sure everything was safe.
Thank you. No other questions? I'll need a motion for F1 to F3. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Dr. Patek, personnel?
Mr. Fuchs, I have a number of items before you this evening. Resignation, request for leave of absence for the first semester this next school year, request for reinstatement to active employment, various informational items, people changing grade levels or buildings, appointments, returning a teacher who was on the PEL, Preferred Eligible List, returning to a tenured position, academic support instructors at the middle school, academic intervention services for Sheridan Hill, curriculum projects, test scoring, training. We already have the fall sports coaches for your review this evening, presentation compensation. We also have tenure appointments, five teachers who are scheduled slated for tenure this coming fall, and this is for approval this evening. You had them for review at the last Board of Education meeting, and modifications to the substitute teacher list, mainly additions and one deletion.
Any questions on P1 to P8? If I might ask, or just, and I know it's not an agenda item, but relative to appointments, we obviously have a number of vacancies to fill. Any update on progress or what we think will stagger those in?
I'm sure there will be quite a few presented to you at the June Board of Education meeting. Our goal is to accomplish as much of the hiring as we can prior to the end of the school year. Given that other school districts are also in search of candidates and the pool is shallow for many positions, not all, for many positions, we'd like to select the candidates as early as possible.
Thank you.
Dr. Patek, I see there's a lot of transfers of staff, so are those complete in terms of the new positions so that as we move forward, we're just looking?
As we move forward, any position filled should be with a nonexisting staff member.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion for P1 to P8?
Can I just clarify something real quick? For the recommendations for the fall sports?
Yes.
I'm only seeing high school. It did say middle school as well, but it only has JV and Verci. Is a middle school coming later?
No, everything should be here.
There's no modified, at least I'm not seeing it.
I will look into it, but I will, if you didn't get it, I will have it for you. Because it's always one packet.
Right.
We'll update it there. So do we have the time since we do not have it here? Can we approve just the high school?
Well, this is for review this evening. It's not for approval.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you. So I guess motion for P1 to P8 excluding the informational item?
Motion.
Do I have a second? All those in favor? Non-instructional?
You have the regular agenda. In addition, I place an addendum at your places this evening. You have a request to amend a previous board action with a change in date of resignation. Resignations, too, for the purposes of retirement, various appointments, including transportation, classroom aides, buildings and ground staff, clerical staff, summer employees and technology, additions to the substitute list. And on the addendum, in addition, you have a request for reinstatement to active employment as well as an informational item.
Any questions on non-instructional? If none, could I have a motion for P9 to P12?
Motion.
Do I have a second? All those in favor? Dr. Hicks, special needs and student activities?
This is the annual review month for preschool. So there were 54 meetings this past month for preschool special ed and 40 for regular special ed, and these numbers will be this high all the way through until the summer. So it's mostly annual reviews at this point.
Nothing out of the ordinary?
Nothing out of the ordinary.
No questions? Could I have a motion for item 10? All those in favor? Board development?
We actually had two things on an addendum here in addition to what's on the regular agenda. So first, on the regular agenda, this is the orchestra trip to Chicago in March of 2019, led by Mr. Shaw. All of the details are in the packet. For the addendum, we also had the annual Washington DC trip for 8th graders and the Quebec trip for those who don't go on the Washington DC trip for 8th graders. Those were the trips. I don't know if you wanted to take those separately from?
So in essence, we have item 1, we have two items. Item 1, which is an overnight field trip for the Clarence High School Orchestra, really consists of three items relative to trips, the Quebec trip as well as the Washington DC trip in November. Relative to years past and what the plan is for the coming year, not all students participate in either trip. Are we going to plan the same activities at a school level?
That's the plan at this point.
Dr. Hicks, do you happen to know the travel agency for the Chicago trip that they're going to use? Do you know?
Is it in, is it in that application?
It's not. They said that one will be used unless I'm...
Ronald J. Cook Travel.
Is it in that letter?
That's it. End of the letter.
Is that okay, Mr. Fiscus?
Dr. Hicks?
Yes.
Should the mock trial Albany trip be included as well?
We're considering that one a competition rather than a field trip, so we just asked, we informed the board in the Friday update rather than the Board of Ed meeting. But yes, good luck to the mock trial team who are competing in the New York State Championships this next weekend.
Any questions on the three trips we have before us? No other questions? Could I get a motion for the three, approving the three trips? A second? All those in favor?
We left on as informational the 6,000 section because it's so big and there's so many changes. We thought the board would like another month to take a look through that. So in June, we will put it on for approval, but we'll leave it on one more month because it's so gigantic.
Aye for one, thank you.
And I thank you as well. That brings us to our second public comment session for this evening. If anybody has anything to add? In the packets before us, we have a number of upcoming meetings listed and a number of events as we get near the end of the school year. It is filled with various concerts at all building levels, grade levels, that keep May and June very busy. Couple items to note. Mr. Mancuso mentioned the Candidates Night, which is tomorrow night here in the lecture hall. This coming Friday is staff development. There's a half-day for K to 5 with an 11:00 a.m. early dismissal, and then the budget vote is next week, Tuesday, in the gymnasium. With that...
Mike, if I could just add that on Wednesday, we have unified basketball here.
The blackout.
Yes, so if any, it's a great event, but you can make it.
5:00 in the gym.
5:00 in the gym.
Thank you. All right. If there's nothing else from the board, we need a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing matters leading to the employment of a particular person. Do I have a second? All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.